Younger four eighters succeed, she volunteers this time every Tuesday during the school year to work with the junior master gardeners at Sunny Carter Elementary. Jordan's also very involved in her church youth group and loves to play with a dog Sadie in her free time. After graduating from Ace, Jordan hopes to attend the University of West Georgia and pursue a degree in nursing. We also had with us Mr. Walden Hailey. Walden, where are you? You still here? Did you leave? Oh, shoot. He left Walden Hailey. Seven years old. He's a first grader and led us in the pledge of allegiance. He's gonna be a rising second grader at Stratford Academy. He loves sports. Walden plays basketball, baseball, golf, and football. Academically, Walden loves math, Spanish, and art. Walden is a member of New Birth Missionary Baptist Church, where he's a member of the youth choir. Loves to sing gospel songs, very energetic as you could tell, and very loving, makes friends wherever he goes. How about a round of applause for two fine young people? We appreciate them and thank you very much for being here and leading us in the pledge of allegiance. We're off to a great start. Next item on our agenda is to... I guess I need to get over to the regular meeting, don't I? I'm a little bit behind here. We've got the approval of minutes. We had several meetings since our last formal meeting. We have now the minutes of our pre-commission meeting of May the fifteenth and our regular commission meeting that was held on May the fifteenth. We also had a special call meeting on May the twenty-second. We had a public hearing on May the twenty-ninth and the minutes of the public hearing are also prepared. And we had minutes from a special call meeting that was held on May the twenty-ninth. So that's one, two, three, four, five sets of minutes. If there any changes or additions to any of those minutes, let me have them. If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as prepared and submitted? By Schlesinger, second by Shepherd. All in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and those five sets of minutes are approved. We do not have any invited guests with us tonight, but each and every one of you are welcome to be here and we're glad that you are here. But that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which are public comments on agenda items. Mr. Lucas, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I was looking to see if the Georgia Doom Arena Football Team representatives were here. I wasn't sure they could make it. Is there anybody from the Georgia Doom Arena? Well, they were going to come. I know they do have practices in the evening, so they might be unavailable, but I just wanted to say they need the support of this community and I wanted them to come as our invited guests and to express to you how important it is for you to support our own teams, just like we turned out for the Macon Bacon and that was wonderful. You know, just a big, big crowd, but we've got to support other recreational activities too, especially on the professional level. And they were going to present to each commissioner two tickets and ask you to please attend this last home game, which is at seven PM on Saturday evening. I'll be there and I want everybody to join me so that we can help to make sure the Georgia Doom survives. It's an exciting game. Their last score was fifty-five to forty... Fifty-five to twenty, something like that, fast-paced. So I'll see y'all there on Saturday evening at seven at the Centralplex. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Next, public comments on agenda items. That is items that are on agenda for action tonight. This is the opportunity for people to talk to us before we vote on those agenda items. If you wanted to talk to us and signed up to talk to us on a non-agenda item, we'll get to that a little bit later in tonight's agenda. And speaking of the agenda, there are two changes that we have made to the agenda item. L has been tabled at the pre-commission meeting and that's an item about a required mandatory contribution of six percent to the pension plan. That is tabled and if you are here to talk about that, we're not gonna talk about it. So it's not on the agenda for tonight. Also, item M has also been tabled and will be taken up at a later time. With that, I don't think there are any other agenda changes. But with the first thing that we... First person to sign up, Mr. Curry. And Mr. Curry indicates you wanted to talk to us about item M, which is tabled and not gonna be on the agenda tonight. Do you want to talk to us about any other agenda item?
I got these kind of things.
All right, then we'll come back to you on your non-agenda item request a little bit later. Mr. Chet Novak wants to talk to us about alcohol beverage licenses and a number of them are on the agenda tonight. Ms. Novak, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna be very short with this session. I just want to say I think it's a real sad comment that a great city loses stores like Kmart, Krogers, Harvey's, Toys R Us, but yet every meeting there's requests for more liquor licenses. Tonight, they're being eight on the agenda. I really wish that there would be a moratorium on the number of liquor licenses that go in this city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Novak. We appreciate you being here and appreciate those comments. Next, Mr. Rufus Holmes wants to talk to us about item K, which is the healthcare RFP. Ms. Holmes, thank you. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
I am Rufus Holmes, Chairman of the Bibb County Retired Employees Association, and I am here to represent a large group of retirees. You have county and city retirees here tonight that are still on the Macon-Bibb County healthcare plan. I realize y'all are just voting tonight to go over the plan before y'all vote on it, but I'm gonna go ahead with my comments. A change was made to the healthcare plan yesterday to ask for separate quotes for employees versus retirees. We asked that this be amended to reflect one quote for both. We ask this change be made before any final approval of the RFP. This is the first step to make retirees pay more than employees for their health insurance. Retirees feel like discarded waste by the way they are treated. Retirees have been used as excuses for the deficit. I heard one commissioner recently say, "Let the retirees suffer." Remember, these retirees are voters and taxpayers and have long memories. I don't apologize for my comments. This is how retirees really feel. We hope you will amend the RFP to reflect one quote for both employees and retirees. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Next, Ms. Valerie Nguyen wants to talk to us about the budget. Ms. Nguyen, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Can I have Mr. Novak's a few minutes that he didn't use?
No.
He never cuts it off short. Thanks anyway. I'm here as a broken record, basically, to talk about the budget again. I have been attending the operations and finance committee meetings and I'm glad that I have because when you go to the committee meetings, if you don't already know this, this is where you learn and hear what's going on and the discussions that go on. They've had some very, very difficult discussions here. First of all, I want to say something very positive. I love the city of Macon. I'm a sixty-six-year resident of this community and I plan to be here until I die, unless you raise my taxes. But anyway, I do plan to be here for quite a while, a few more years anyway, and I want to see us continue to move in the right direction. I came down to First Friday, Macon, Friday night, and I love to see the people down there and I love to see what's happening in Macon. A lot of friends, a few friends I ran into were from Houston County. Hey, they're coming into Macon to see what we got going on. We need to move them back to Macon, but we can't do that if we're gonna raise property taxes. And here I'm getting to the less positive part. You know, the city, the property owners of Macon have borne the responsibility of some financial issues for the city. Too long now, the second year in a row, we're proposing raising the millage rate to three-point something, maybe two-point-nine. You know, I think the citizens of our community might, might be willing to accept something between one and two, maybe two, if we would explain to our citizens a little better where our money has been going. And there are some explanations for some things that need to be brought up, healthcare being one, and just let the citizens know what has happened to the money over the past four years since consolidation. You know, we had five years to equalize, I think, the millage rate between the county and the city, and that was accelerated to two and a half years. And I think that posed a problem initially and I think some of you commissioners voted on that. We can't go back and change that. That's been done. But what we need to do now is correct, look at our budget. And I talk about the outside agencies a lot. And guys, you know, if someone came up to me on the street and says, "Ma'am, do you have a dollar?" And I opened up my pockets and I had nothing, I'd say, "No, I'd love to help you, but I don't have any money." And that's what you have to do. Tough love is what we call that. Tough times require tough love. We have to look at the outside agencies and see, do we really think that's what the taxpayers' money should go for? I don't really think it is. I think a lot of these could be self-sufficient if they really tried. If we took away the funding from some of these, then they would have to go out and find funds if they want to still be in existence. So I think we need to let them decide if they want to be in existence and try to find funding beyond the city. I don't think our taxpayers' money should go for things like that. When you look at the list and you have things like the library and the bookmobile, yes, I think this community needs that. Of course, we have to have transportation, so our transportation needs to be in there. But there are some things on this list that could be done through private funds and contributions. But these agencies need to go out and find those funds and I think they can, given the incentive that they don't have the money coming from us, the city, anymore. So I think we need to consider that again and the budget. I think some of that's been talked about, but it always gets backed out. I hear that in the meetings in there. And again, if you want to really hear what's going on, go to the committee meetings. You'll hear what's going on. I think you really need to consider where you're going with the millage rate because I told you earlier that people come from Houston County to enjoy what activities we have here in Macon. We want them to move back here, back here from Monroe County, but we're gonna keep chasing them away if we raise our millage rates and our property taxes again. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Next, Mr. Terry McGee. Mr. McGee wants to talk to us about the budget as well. Mr. McGee, thank you for being here. You're recognized for five minutes.
Macon Bibb is operating out of deficit because our leadership has failed to do their duty. As I review the prior swags that have been prepared, I begin to understand how we got here. The projected shortfall is ten million or six million, sixteen million, depending on the day in the calculation. You've instructed us that consolidation would reduce costs and the community would recap savings. What has happened in this year and year after year is deficit spending without closure. Have we proposed another tax increase to solve the current budget deficit? Do we have the courage to reduce spending? Excess spending has to be curbed immediately or Macon Bibb will continue to see the population decrease and more businesses leave. I read about all the new companies coming to the area, but I read about all the tax reduction to lure the businesses here. The community cannot continue this path. The current operation will not support too many more of these deals. These companies are bringing jobs for our community members getting these jobs or the employees located in Macon Bibb or in surrounding counties. When will this tide turn and increases stop? The elected officials that we have got us here are the same officials that we're expecting to lead us to our better times. Are we expecting too much of you? You are our elected officials. Can you make the decision to reduce spending and cease with these continuous tax increases? People are leaving the community as consequences of higher taxes. Who wants to pay more property taxes and sales taxes? We are competing for retail sales. Higher taxes are not a great sales pitch. Online shopping is here to stay. You have to develop a strategy to compete. Community development has to be in all the communities, not just the Second Street Quarter. I hope that division of the Second Street Quarter is good for Macon Bibb, but the blight outside the corridor is growing daily. I see more people abandoning their properties as taxes increase. What solution do you have other than move more taxes to clear blighted areas? Can the property owners be held accountable before the property becomes a burden to the community? Community violence has not been addressed by you. Your silence and lack of actions are not helping the situation. Each commissioner should be leading a campaign to prevent violence, the same as you do to get elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. We appreciate your comments, appreciate you being here. Mr. Johnny Rowe. Mr. Rowe wants to talk to us about property taxes and days off. Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Rowe. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. I've heard just about every one of you up there say that y'all have to make hard decisions and I agree with y'all, one-hundred percent you do. But as a property owner of this county and an employee of this county, we are tired. Leave us alone. Y'all are making these hard decisions on our backs. If y'all raise our property taxes, the only thing that'd keep me in Bibb County is my wife, 'cause I already want to throw my house up for sale. Find somewhere else for this money. We give money to Navisant Health. Why? I know, it's gonna be for indigent care. Well, let me tell you, they don't care about anybody being indigent, 'cause they just sent me a bill for twenty-five hundred dollars. You think they're gonna work with me on paying it? Not very well. We give money to the transit authority. I know we gotta give them some money, but cut some of it. If you have to raise bus fares, oh, well, like you said, you gotta make the tough decisions and everybody ain't gonna be happy. No decision y'all make is gonna make everybody in this room or everybody in this county happy. But the property owners and the employees are catching the brunt of it and we are tired. Now you're talking about taking three of our days off. I've worked for seventeen years. I can count how many raises I've got on one hand and y'all want to take them as fast as you give them to us. We're tired. Leave us alone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments, sir. Next, Jake Farrow also wants to talk to us about the budget process. Mr. Farrow, welcome. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you. My wife and I, Michelle, have lived in Macon for nearly thirty years, came in nineteen-eighty-six. And during that time that we did arrive in Macon, it was ranked, I believe, in the top ten counties in the country by USA Today as a place to raise a family, live, work, and it's something that we have to strive again to do. But I just want to touch on something that is very near and dear to me and that's the budgeting process. I pray for the county commissioners and the mayor and all those involved in doing the budget. Budgets aren't easy. Budgeting process is gut-wrenching, soul-searching. There are winners and losers. There's give and take. Everybody has to understand that. We need to pray for all of these people and all those that are involved in the budget process because it's very, very important that it's done right for our city, our great city, Macon Bibb. Tough decisions do have to be made and there will be people that are going to be unhappy. You just heard it a couple of times by the speakers before me, but there's going to have to be some where there's winners and I don't wanna call them losers, but you've gotta balance it out. Taxes aren't the answer. The answer is really going after the budget, making some tough decisions, and we pray for all of you and anything we can do to help, we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrow. We appreciate your comments and appreciate you being here. Next, Mr. Alex Grubbs wants to talk to us about the furlough days. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Board, I appreciate my time. In the news last week, here's some of the highlights that were talked about. Sheriff's Office has over a hundred vacant positions. The budget now has funding to fill fifteen of those vacancies. The sheriff himself said that he wasn't sure that he could fill those positions by December. Bibb County is on its eighteenth murder of the year. The sheriff said we're short in the jail on patrol and investigations. This past weekend, deputies found themselves in a dire situation and that's been covered by the news. I don't have to go into it here, but I'll tell y'all something on a personal note. My wife, as well as the spouses of other deputies, I'm sure, have been asking, "What if? What if the responding deputy that night had been me? And what if my backup didn't show up because budget FY 2019 furloughed my backup that When we leave the house to go on to our shifts every day, we kiss our babies, we kiss our wives, our husbands, we go out and we defend this city as best as we can. The entire time we're out, our families, excited and hopeful, also know in the back of their minds that there is a possibility that we don't come back through that door at the end of the day. As a commissioner, I ask you, think about that. Think about the fact that it is well-known how short we are, how publicized it has been, and ask yourselves, do you want to add that insecurity to your first responders and their families? And do you want to table the responsibility and take that upon yourselves for the possible danger that you might create and the risk you might create to them by shortening their ranks even further, by requiring them to stay home three days every year, each and every one of them, on days they otherwise would have been there helping to defend this county? Reconsider these furlough days, at least for your emergency responders, because you're creating a dangerous situation. That's my time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grubbs. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Next, Dr. Lindsay Holliday wants to talk to us about the budget. Welcome, sir. You're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The budget of my poor church and the budget of profitable garbage. My church had been running a three-percent deficit for three years and we changed officers and we've made some tough decisions. Our slate roof on this historic High Street Church sprung a leak and there aren't roofers that really understand slate roofs anymore. We were looking at replacing the whole roof, wrestling with historic preservation. We finally found a roofer who understood it. He peeled up a couple layers of slate, put underlayment down, and fixed the leak. It took us four months to find, to struggle, to find the right solution, and that's what y'all gotta do. You're in the position of my church, you cannot keep running budget deficits and you got to find solutions, even when the first person that comes to you doesn't have the solution. Second person can't solve the situation. It's up to y'all to keep pushing, 'cause the solutions are out there that are affordable. Of course, we did ask everybody to pray the week before we found this right roofer. I said, "Look, this roof, we've got, this is a mortal wound to this building." And it finally got everybody's attention. They must have prayed right, 'cause we found the right roofer. Y'all can start praying too. Profit in garbage. Garbage is profitable. That's why a profitable business came here and took our garbage away and they're making money on our garbage. They're taking money home. They're buying the beach houses, the mountain houses. That business belongs to us. That profit belongs to us. That was a serious mistake. I came here and spoke to you several times before you gave the profitable garbage away. I said, "When you Google garbage, city garbage and corruption, you find a litany of episodes in our country." The profitable garbage person will find a way to keep his contract with you. All he's gotta do is make a majority of you happy enough to up his contract. We need to take that money back. There's only a few things. The deputies, the government, you have priorities. Number one is public safety. That's keeping the deputies paid. Number two is public health. That's getting the garbage off the street. These are your jobs. These are not things to be outsourced. Things you can outsource are like my favorite Museum of Arts and Sciences. I love the Museum of Arts and Sciences. I always give them a healthy... And the library, we need the library, we need all these other things, but that is not a priority for this government. You need to prioritize public safety and garbage, public health, and keep working at it, 'cause y'all really threw that money away. Every year, we're giving away millions of dollars to private garbage. That money belongs to us taxpayers. I'm asking you to get that garbage back here. That money belongs to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday. Appreciate you being here. Finally, Mr. Terry Simmons. Terry Simmons wants to talk to us about the budget. Oh, there you are. Ms. Simmons, you're recognized for five minutes.
Still nervous, but anyway, some of you weren't at the meeting last Tuesday, so I'll just give a brief introduction of myself again. My name's Terry Simmons. I worked for the local government here for over fourteen years as cash manager. I am a Bibb County voter and a taxpayer and over two years ago, I was kicked out on the sidewalk because I had mentioned to my senior managers and to most of these commissioners that a fellow employee of mine that I trained, I actually did her job for a little less than a year prior to her being hired. I was her primary backup. She was my primary backup. She had less education than I did, no degree, not a CPA. I am. She was given an inappropriate raise, in my opinion. The reason she was given an inappropriate raise, I believe, is 'cause she was friends with my superiors. She worked with my superiors at a previous firm in Macon and I mentioned this in the letters, emails, conversations I had with all of you, probably, except Joe Allen, around the time that I was kicked out on the sidewalk. And none of that, none of that helped me at all. Not at all. I do, by the way, still have the stub receipts where I sent certified letters to each and every one of you that was a commissioner at the time. I personally spoke with a couple of you face to face. Scotty Shepherd, talked to Al Tillman on the phone, sent emails to Mr. Watkins, emails to Elaine Lucas. I don't know, that might be all, but anyway, nothing happened. Now, that's not anywhere near thirty-three million dollars I'm talking about, but it's still wasteful spending if it's given to someone who doesn't really deserve it. We're talking about six thousand dollars in this situation. Anyway, to address some of the changes that you want to make in the budget, employee furloughs, increased health insurance premiums for retirees and current employees. Why, I mean, I'm sorry, but if you work for Bibb County or you're a retiree for Bibb County, then you might want to look at some of these people that you know did wasteful spending. spending. Any wasteful spending, because they're the ones that are causing you to have furlough days, they're the ones that's causing you to pay more health insurance premiums, they're the ones that are responsible for any of the negative effects from this administration. Again, I urged all employees and retirees to question the integrity of this administration, the budget process, the budget numbers, the integrity of these, um, of this administration. And, um, last week I stated that Miller Edwards, uh, he's smarter than a stack of books, but he stated in the media that the budget process should be under the finance director. I vehemently disagree for reasons that I won't get into right at this minute. But, um, still wasteful, reckless spending, not good stewards of our taxpayer funds. At the very least, that is not ethical, it's not moral, it's not anything to be proud of, you think? Um, there were many, many people in the mayor's administration, in my department, in other departments that were given raises after consolidation, immediately after, and some of them were very wasteful. Some of them maybe not as wasteful, but the garbage was increased. I know, I know, the general public doesn't know, but I know that that money goes into a special sanitation fund, which does not come from, directly from taxpayer money. Um, it's probably filtered over there, but it's, it's moved over to that special fund for that purpose. But one thing, one problem with some of the issues is that the public doesn't know very much about how this government works, or any, any local government. But I think we do need to look at some of the appropriations that are being made to the medical center, Mercer, the roundabouts that are being built in this, uh, county. And I don't think that it's right for this administration to reneg on promises made to the retirees that this year, last year, prior years, none of them.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here and appreciate your comment. Uh, next item on our agenda, uh, are reports from our standing committees. Um, the first of those is Operations and Finance Committee, and that, uh, report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The committee met on May twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and took the following action. We approved the following SPOSS project expenditures, an agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation to receive funding in the amount of fifteen million, six hundred eighty-four thousand dollars with a local share being the cost in excess of that amount estimated to be one hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-four cents payable from the twenty seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds and twenty eighteen SPOSS revenues for the Jeffersonville Road Expansion Project. An agreement with Moreland, Altobelli and Associates for the construction inspection services during the reconstruction of the Jeffersonville Road project in an estimated amount of one point two million with a Macon-Bibb County match estimated to be one hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, we approved an agreement with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company for the reconstruction of Jeffersonville Road in the amount of seventeen million and some odd dollars with the G-DOT paying fourteen million, fourteen point five million and the Macon Water Authority paying two point five million and Macon-Bibb County paying any overages from the twenty SPOSS, twenty seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds and twenty eighteen SPOSS revenues. The committee approved the following agreements and contracts. An agreement with E&amp;D Contracting Services for two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars to be paid seventy percent from L-MIG funds and thirty percent from twenty seventeen SPOSS bond funds for the purposes of repairing and installing guardrails on various roads throughout Macon-Bibb County. The county amended the county's application with Georgia Department of Transportation for state allocated funds under the twenty seventeen L-MIG grant for the purposes of adding two new items to the list of road projects to be completed with grant funds. The committee executed an agreement with Georgia Asphalt Incorporated for two point two million dollars to be paid from L-MIG funds and twenty seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds for the purposes of repairing and resurfacing various roads throughout Macon-Bibb County. Committee approved the service order agreement between Macon-Bibb County and Georgia Public Web in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand dollars, eight hu- one hundred seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars payable at a rate of two thousand nine hundred ninety-five thousand per month for thirty-six months from IT Systems and Network Contract Services Budget for the provision of improved governmental-wide internet service at a reduced price. The committee accepted the following grants. A four thousand dollar first responders grant from Marathon Petroleum Corporation for the purposes of a Akron Ozzy Master Ossulating Monitor with a four-inch intake base. Maybe that was four feet. A Georgia Department of Transportation grant for an environmental assessment at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport in the amount of three hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars with a federal share of up to three hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and a state share of up to seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and a local share of up to seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to be paid out of the airport budget for the airport's runway extension planning. Committee approved a grant from the Macon-Bibb County Economic Opportunity Council providing for emergency solutions grant in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to implement homeless prevention, homelessness prevention programs. There was a, the county received a grant from Family Advancement Ministries providing for an emergency solutions grant in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand, six hundred to implement the Family Advancement Ministries Emergency Solution Grant Program. We also received an emergency solutions grant in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand to implement the rapid rehousing program. The committee took the following actions on employee benefits. The requ- the request for proposals for health insurance plan administrators, stop-loss coverage, pharmacy benefits management and ancillary plans to include life, dental, disability and vision insurance shall be subject to the approval of the Macon-Bibb Commission prior to being issued. Committee took the following action, amending the Macon-Bibb County Pension Plan Division, Division of Macon-Bibb County Pensions and Retirement System and the Macon-Bibb Fire and Police Department Employment Retirement System to provide that active plan participants must make a mandatory contribution of six percent of compensation to their respective pension plan. That item was tabled. This concludes the Operations and Finance Committee Report.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Watkins. Um, the next, uh, committee report will be from Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. Uh, the Economic and Community Development Committee met on May the twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and we took the following actions. The committee approved the following appointment. Uh, Mr. Andy Galloway, uh, was recommended for reappointment to the Rivers Edge Behavioral Health Board, but we are holding, uh, that particular one until Mr. Galloway, um, is able to come to the committee. That's been something that we've, uh, talked about for a while, that people who are appointed or reappointed to these boards and authorities, we need to at least know who they are and be able to ask them questions and let them respond, um, as to their service on these boards and authorities. So we feel certain that Mr. Galloway will, uh, be available to, uh, come. I understand he has been, um, ill. Uh, the committee approved the increase for the Macon-Bibb County Recreation Department Facility Rental Fees. The committee heard a presentation from the Linwood Cemetery Preservation Corporation, the Macon Cemetery Preservation Corporation, and we voted to endorse, uh, the concept, and you'll be hearing more about that. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Uh, I understand no report from Public Safety Committee? And so that brings us to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Chairman Watkins will give that report.
Thank you, sir. The Facilities, the Facilities and Engineering Committee met on May twenty-second. One item was discussed. The committee approved the closure and abandonment of Willow Street Lane to authorize the mayor to sell Willow Street Lane consisting of point oh-one-two acres and point four-two-three acres of adjacent property located at eight forty-seven Riverside Drive to Schuster Enterprises for ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. This completes the Facilities and Engineering Committee Report.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. That concludes all of the standing committee reports. Next item, uh, on our agenda for tonight is the Consent Agenda. Uh, the Consent Agenda has, uh, eight, uh, alcohol beverage license requests, um, that have been received and processed. Each of the eight, uh, applications is accompanied, uh, by the certificate from the sheriff's office of a satisfactory background, uh, in its review, uh, of the applicant, a criminal background check, um, that a certification from Business Development Services, that the appropriate fees, uh, have been tendered, uh, a certificate of zoning compliance from the Macon-Bibb County Planning and Zoning, uh, Authority, uh, a measurement form from the county engineer to say that the location meets all of the required, um, distance requirements from other prohibited structures, uh, and a copy of the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph. Each of these eight has all of that documentation. Uh, the first, um, is an existing business, uh, with a change of ownership, so it's not an additional location, it's just a change of ownership, but that requires that it go through the process. It's for beer and wine package sales to go. Uh, it is for H.R. Twenty-Four Enterprises, LLC, doing business as Exxon Food Mart located at thirty-four eighty-four Napier Avenue. Uh, the second is also an existing business with a change of ownership. Uh, it is for beer and wine package sales to go, uh, at their location of forty-two ninety Delwood Drive in Macon. It's a Tita LLC doing business as Exxon and located at forty-two ninety Delwood Drive. The third application, uh, is also an existing business with a change of ownership. Uh, it is from Five Nights LLC doing business as Exxon located at twenty-six thirty Emery Highway, uh, and it is for beer and wine package sales to go from that location. Um, the next, uh, application, uh, is a, uh, new alcoholic beverage license for the Blow Lounge LLC located at five eighty-six Poplar Street, uh, in Macon. Uh, it is for beer and wine to be consumed on the premises, uh, at that location. Uh, the fifth application, um, is from Primetime Forty-One LLC located at four twenty-six Walnut Street. It is an existing business with a change of ownership. Uh, it is for liquor and beer to be consumed on the premises, uh, at that location. Uh, next, uh, application, uh, is from Mahai, uh, Twenty Eighteen Incorporated doing business as Pace Car Express located at twenty-two forty-three Shirling Drive. That's a new application and it is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Uh, the seventh application, uh, is from ESPOM Sports Bar and Cafe LLC located at twenty-eight twenty-two Bloomfield Drive. It is an existing business, but has, this is a change of ownership, uh, and they are requesting to sell beer and one, liquor, I'm sorry, liquor and beer to be consumed on the premises, uh, at that location. And finally, um, Varshai Six One Seventy-Three LLC doing business as Shiv Food Mart located at thirty-four seventy-two Houston Avenue, Macon, Georgia. Um, that is also an existing business with a change of ownership and they are asking to continue to sell beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Uh, the, uh, committee of the whole reviewed these and recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of those eight licenses as requested, signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? One no, Commissioner Watkins, uh, the ayes have it and the licenses will be issued as requested. Um, that brings us now, uh, to, uh, item number nine, uh, which is old business. Um, and the first, uh, um, item, uh, under old business, um, is a resolution to sell the alley known as Willow Street Lane, uh, and the additional acreage to Schuster Enterprises, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the closure and abandonment of Willow Street Lane, to authorize the mayor to sell Willow Street Lane consisting of point oh-one-two acres and point four-two-three acres of adjacent property located at eight four-seven Riverside Drive to Schuster Enterprises, Inc. for ninety-four thou- ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and forty cents, and to authorize the use of seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars of the sale proceeds for the completion of the topographic and boundary survey necessary for the closure and for other purposes.
Uh, the, uh, Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. A committee of the whole added the amendment to authorize the use of five thousand seven, would the, use a portion of the proceeds to pay for the survey to close out the environmental. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended, signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it and the resolution as amended is adopted. Uh, that brings us to item B, uh, which is a contract, uh, for, um, installing guardrails at various locations throughout Bibb County, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with E&amp;D Contracting Services, Inc. for two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars to be paid seventy percent from L-MIG funds and thirty percent from two thousand and seventeen SPOSS bond funds for the purpose of repairing and installing guardrails on various roads throughout Macon-Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, item C, um, is a, a resolution, um, to authorize an agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation, uh, for adding additional items or additional roads, uh, on the list of roads to be repaired under our local maintenance and improvement grant, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to amend the county's application with the Georgia Department of Transportation for state allocated funds under the two thousand and seventeen L-MIG grant for the purpose of adding two items to the list of road projects to be completed with grant funds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, item D, um, i- is a, a contract, uh, for, um, road repair and resurfacing throughout Macon-Bibb County, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Georgia Asphalt, Inc. for two million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-four cents to be paid seventy percent from L-MIG funds and thirty percent from two thousand and seventeen SPOSS bond funds for the purpose of repairing and resurfacing various roads throughout Macon-Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, item E, um, is a contract for additional web services, and I'll ask the- Next, item E is a contract for additional web services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a service order agreement between Macon-Bibb County and Georgia Public Web, Inc. in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars payable at the rate of two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars per month for thirty-six months from the IT System and Network Contract Services budget for the provision of improved government-wide internet service at a reduced price and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to accept a first responders' grant, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to accept a first responders' grant for Marathon Petronium Corporation in the amount of four thousand dollars to the Macon-Bibb County Fire Department for the purchase of an Akron Ozzy Master oscillating monitor and a four-inch intake base and for other purposes.
And then there's, there's an Akron Ozzy Master oscillating monitor and four-inch intake base, the fire department needs it for fire suppression, so there it is. The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it and we're the proud new owner of an Akron Ozzy Master oscillating monitor. Next is, next is item G, a resolution for environmental assessment out at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport in connection with the runway extension project, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to accept a grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation for an environmental assessment at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars with a federal share of up to three hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, a state share of up to seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, and a local share of up to seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to be paid out of the airport budget for the airport runway extension planning and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item H now, which is an agreement with the E.O.C. for homeless prevention program services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the Macon-Bibb County Government Economic and Community Development Department and the Macon-Bibb Economic Opportunity Council, Inc., providing for an emergency solutions grant in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to implement the homelessness prevention program and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a similar resolution with Family Advancement Ministries for additional social service program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the Macon-Bibb County Government Economic and Community Development Department and Family Advancement Ministries, Inc., providing for an emergency solutions grant in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars to implement the Family Advancement Ministries Emergency Solution Grant Program and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution for an agreement with the E.O.C. again, this for rapid rehousing program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the Macon-Bibb County Government Economic and Community Development Department and the Macon-Bibb, and the Macon-Bibb Economic Opportunity Council, Inc., providing for an emergency solution grant in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars to implement the rapid rehousing program and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item K is a resolution to require that the commission approve the RFP before it goes out for additional health insurance, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to direct that the request for proposals, RFP, for health insurance plan administrator, stop-loss coverage, pharmacy benefit management, and ancillary plans to include life, dental, disability, and vision insurance shall be subject to the approval of the commission prior to being issued and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item L, and that has been tabled during the meeting of the committee of the whole prior to this meeting and will not be discussed at this meeting. Next is item M, and that's a reappointment to River's Edge. That also was tabled by the committee of the whole and is subject to further action at a later time. That brings us now to item N on our agenda, and that is a resolution to approve a new fee schedule for renting facilities from the Recreation Department, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the proposed increase in Macon-Bibb County's Recreation Department facility rental fees as attached hereto as Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate funds for the operation of the Macon-Bibb Government for fiscal year 2019, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to adopt a budget and appropriate sums for the operation of the Macon-Bibb County Government for fiscal year 2019 to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones, got you first sir.
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments on the budget. We've spent many hours scouring the budget. We don't agree as to what should be cut, what shouldn't be cut. We're all concerned about a tax increase, the millage rate. Citizens have lost confidence in us, they blame us, the commission, for the situation we're in, and they're partially correct. So the question arises, how did we get to this point? Because when we consolidated, we actually are operating now three hundred less employees. We reduced the budget from a hundred and sixty-five million to a hundred and fifty million. So what happened? Well, a lot of things happened. Healthcare costs continue to rise. We've been along, we're self-insured as an entity. At twenty million, it's now projected to be twenty-five million. We have things in place to stop gas, stop gap loss insurance components, but in 2016 we had sixteen catastrophic illnesses. In 2017, we had twenty-seven catastrophic illnesses. You can't control that. Sales tax, internet sales, that continues to grow, not only in Macon-Bibb County but nationwide. We can't control that either. Five other things I wrote down. Early retirement program we had in 2014, I guess it was, recommended by the former county manager. It was way too rich a plan because people who had been here for thirty years were able to retire at ninety percent of what they were making. Not very many people would refuse that offer. Way too rich a retirement plan. Continue to be paying for that from now on. We don't always get it right, even though questions were raised, we objected, analyzed, it was still passed. We lost a lot of talent there as well, not only the sheriff's department, the fire department. We lost a lot of talent, a lot of good people that've been there for a long, long time and were very talented and very dedicated to this community. Elimination of double taxation to the former city, Mr. Chairman. That was done in two years. Have to lay that at the doorstep of the administration. Should have been done in five, of course that's 2020 hindsight, you know, it's easy to have 2020 hindsight, but the bottom line was, we had no way to replace revenues lost annually of twenty million dollars. Big reasons we're in the situation we're in right now. That was very short-sighted. Should have been five years. We could have taken five years. Unfortunately, the county, former county, unincorporated area, has taken the brunt of this. If you recall, if you live in the former city like I do, we got tax decreases two years in a row. That was to equal out that double taxation that we've had for so long. But the counties, theirs didn't go up at the time, but last year we had a three-mill tax increase. I voted against that because of certain components like money going to Navisant Health who doesn't need it and other things, but the county residents have really taken the brunt of the tax increase, and if we have one again, which we probably will, at some millage rate. So the taxpayer has lost their trust and confidence in the Macon-Bibb County Government. Historically, Bibb County, Bibb County Commission and City of Macon has given to outside, what we call outside agencies, millions and millions of dollars.
Are they worthy?
You bet. They are great agencies, they do a lot of great good in this community, but we simply cannot afford to give what we once did to these wonderful outside agencies. We cannot afford it. Furlough days, and I sympathize with, with what Deputy Grubbs and others have said, and for me personally, I'd, I'd be willing to go back on the furlough days, but I would like for you to contribute to your pension plan. I know you were hired without it, way back in 1986, you actually contributed six or seven percent to the pension plan. I know there were some convoluted things that went on and lost some social security, now it's back sixty percent, but, I mean, I've had FOP President Danny Thicke and call me and say, "We want to contribute to the pension plan." So to me, that's a viable option, something you could contribute, whether it's six, which we once had on the board, and then it was four, and then it got taken off altogether. To me, I would rather see you contribute, and I, and I would think, you would think the same, but perhaps you don't, contribute at least four percent to your pension plan.
And by the way...
Change the plan whereby you don't have to be there ten years, that you could take your money with you after a period, maybe it's ninety days or a year, I don't know, one, two, three years, be able to take it with you.
Because people's situations change.
Part of what I want to see in the budget is, we don't create value. We're talking about raising the millage rate again, but yet we don't create value for the customer. I handle two, three, four calls a week on, they miss my garbage, they miss my yard refuse, they didn't pick up the limbs. And we solve it, I solve it by making a phone call to the right people, but it shouldn't have to be that way. The citizen taxpayers of Macon should expect great service. We don't have great service, we have inconsistent service. We have average service. Inconsistency equates to mediocrity many times. So part of my wish list for the budget is to add at least three employees to public works, parks, education, and facilities management. Now why would I want that? Because they're less staff than they were before consolidation, and they're very well understaffed. We were supposed to hire thirteen new employees with last year's budget, and none of them got hired. So consequently, and their employees, just like the Macon-Bibb County Sheriff's Department is and the, and the Fire Department, they're also Macon-Bibb County employees, and their, and their morale is in the gutter, and they deserve to be, to have some help. So I want, if we're gonna raise the millage rate, and I think you can count on that, what I want to do is minimize it, but I think, what I, what I want to do is, I want some employees to be added whereby we give better service, and whether it's a pothole or a public safety issue, or a traffic light that doesn't work, or there's a dead deer in the road, these guys respond at all hours of the night also.
May not be putting out...
A fire may not be preventing someone from getting killed, but it's a, it's a service. So my, what I want to do is propose, and, and did this in committee, an amendment which calls for a one-point-seven million dollar reduction from outside agencies. I don't, I love them all, but we don't have the money. When you don't have the money, you don't have the money, and it's not fair, as many have stated, to put it on the backs of the taxpayers. So I'd make the, now, along with that budget proposal, it equates to a two-point-five millage rate. I don't like that. There's just, what I don't want to be doing is talking about this again next year. Oh, we gotta raise the taxes. We didn't do it, we didn't do enough cuts. So it's gonna be painful for everybody. Everybody needs to have skin in the game. We can, you know, reasonable minds can differ on where it should come, but if we, if we get employees to contribute to a, their own pension plan, which is very reasonable to me, it's hard to find a plan in the United States of America whereby the employee doesn't contribute the same amount the employer does, and that's not the case, because we contribute anywhere between seventeen to twenty-one percent. And I understand, that's part, it's part of your package when you were hired, but number one, we want to make sure these plans are viable. Fire and police is very viable for various reasons, somewhere around a hundred percent, but former Bibb County is way down closer to seventy, and former City of Macon is maybe eighty or eighty-five. I don't have the latest figures, but we need to make sure they're all viable so that it's there when you retire, and also you ought to be able to take it with you if you leave after five years. You shouldn't have to wait ten years, in my view. So that's my proposal, that, that budget amendment that I presented, so I make a motion that that be passed.
Mr. Chairman. I think I would be correct in saying, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion for the purposes of discussion.
Got a motion and second, further discussion then on the amendment. Chairman Watkins, I've got you next sir.
And just to make sure I'm in order, I, I had some statements prepared on the more general motion I would like to talk about, to sponsor some questions on the amendment, so...
You may, you may address both at this point, the original budget proposal as well as the amendment.
Thank you. So just on the process... So, just on the process, we begin our budget hearings with a budget of roughly 165 million, or 3.7 mil increase proposed by Mayor Rickert. The committee has met very diligently over the past few weeks, and I thank you all for your attendance and involvement. Very early in that process, the, two things became true, that very few commissioners were interested in doing any type of property tax increase, and very few of us were interested in significantly impacting services. So with those two conflicting goals in mind, we've tried to create a budget, or trim the budget that was presented, and we're presenting today a budget of 162 million dollars, which is a millage rate change of 3.2 mils. What this budget does, so last year's budget was 150 million, so this budget is 12 million in excess of that. The key points of difference, this budget anticipates an extra 5 million in healthcare spend, extra 4 million in Fire Department spending, extra 2 million in the Sheriff's Department spending, largely for the Sheriff's Department, excuse me, largely for the Fire Department, that's to cover new facilities. We've, we're in the process of opening three more fire stations in the county, and also for public safety, we implemented a raise last year that only impacted half the year, so this is reflecting a full year of that salary increase. Also included are some negatives. Many of them are small in nature. The largest and probably one of the more controversial ones still here are the three furlough days. Those three furlough days have an estimated economic impact of 845,000 dollars. Also included in this budget is the, is the removal of funding for nineteen currently unfilled positions. And unfilled positions, repositioned, someone has retired or been removed, and we had it posted on our website, so these are nineteen full-time positions, fifteen of which are from the Sheriff's Department. Things that this budget does not do, things that this budget does not do. It is not requiring a pension contribution from employees. There is no major change to service anticipated in this budget. There are no layoffs or reduction in force of active employees anticipated in this budget, and that is true for general government employees, public safety employees, and outside agencies. As we move forward in the conversation, I just want to point out that I think a lot of folks have said that these are tough decisions, these are, that all of us are trying to figure out how to make, and there are consequences no matter which decision we make. I think option A, and that's largely what before, which is before you today, is this 162 million dollar budget, its consequences are creating an extra 10 million dollars in government spend for the purposes of keeping the same level of service that we have. The trade-off for that is, that is, it is axing or would require an extra 108 dollars per citizen or per property owner in Bibb County to fund that extra 10 million dollars, 10 million dollars in spend. That's, that is what we would have to do as a community to maintain this level of service. If we don't want to pay an extra 108 dollars per 100,000 dollar property, then there are consequences. We need to find 12 million dollars in cuts to make 150 million dollar budget work. And there are consequences when we do that. Those consequences include layoffs, layoffs to general staff, and, and excuse me when I talk, I've gotten out of the habit of really classifying outside agencies as much different from our general, because layoffs, both whether you're the Douglas Theater that we own, or you're the recreation building that we own. The bulk of what the dollars that are in these budgets for any of these organizations are people. They are the people that provide the service. So when we talk about cuts, it's not, particularly when we talk about a 5% cut, yes, we can do operational things, but when you start getting into the 20%, the 30%, there's not a lot of fat in many of these organizations. Board of Elections was a great example of something we just voted on. Because of 17,000 dollars, they need to come back to us because there's not fat in that budget. Just the whole in the election, the Board of Elections needs extra money. So, and for some of those outside agencies, the consequences can be severe. It's less oversight, less regulations, the possibility of fraud, waste, abuse coming from a lot of these agencies, and you may think I'm being overdramatic, but the possibility for starvation, abuse, and disease spread for some of our, for some of our needy citizens that a lot of these funds in the Community Service and Welfare Section protect are also possible consequences. And I, in closing, I just think we need to consider what type of community we want to be. If we are still interested in being a developing urban center, that costs money. Unfortunately, the cost of government services continue to rise, and there are costs of that. If we are, if we enjoy rural, limited services, limited educational opportunities for our students, limited cultural access, then we have the power to make that decision. But it is a decision that comes with consequences that on either side, you will either see it in your pockets immediately, or you will see it in a less, a less inviting, less service-friendly government. But those are our two options. We're either raising revenue, or we're cutting expenses. I can say the budget that is presented is 162 million, trying to maintain the same level of service. I have a question, so I have a question for the sponsor of the legislation. If I'm understanding the document correctly, it contemplates, it seems like a 50% cut to planning and zoning? Operationally, how do you see that playing out?
I don't know their operation, but they're gonna have to have some cuts just like everybody else.
And I, and I asked for that organization in particular, because I know of the function that they do here locally, and we fund them, and again, those are folks who make sure that zoning compliances are met and things are safe for citizens. So I'm just curious from either the administration or anybody else in the body, that when we're making these cuts or proposing these number cuts, that we know what we're doing when we say that we're gonna zero out a Department of Family and Children's Services? Like, my understanding is that that is 10 employees that deal with childcare, safety, child protective services, I believe, what we fund out of that, out of that section. So do we know that they have a second method of payment to pay those salaries? Do we care, or are we just gonna see what happens? You have my time.
Mr. Jones, I've got you next, sir.
Yes. Let me respond, and I'd much rather see money added back to defacts than planning and zoning. Planning and zoning has always been the sacred cow, and I don't know what they need and what they don't need, but they just, they never incurred a cut, they just seem to grow. So I would, I think they need to be cut a certain amount. And I want to, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, I want to make a proposed amendment to mine that would reinstate, take away the furlough days, but make the pension contribution 4%. If we did that, the millage rate could go down to at least 2%, and we could also have money to add funds back to meals on wheels, defacts, things of that nature that need the money more than like a Navisant Health who doesn't need the money.
Point of inquiry, is this an amendment to your amendment, or is this a substitute for your amendment?
Well, I guess it's both. It's an amendment to my amendment whereby we strike the furlough days, but we have all active participants in all plans pay 4% towards their own pension plan.
Well, for, I think that disqualifies as an amendment to your amendment.
All right, then we'll call it a substitute.
I think that's the easier way for people to understand it. Is there a second to the motion for the amendment to the amendment?
Could it please be clarified, because I'm not... If you look at the floor amendment I just handed out, the bottom of page one, the following floor amendment shall be incorporated as part of Exhibit A. Active participants in the Macon-Bibb County Pension Plan Division A, excuse me, active participants in the Macon-Bibb County Pension Plan, Division A of the Macon-Bibb County Pensions and Retirement System, and the Macon Fire and Police Department Employees Retirement System, here and after collectively referred to as the pension plans, will begin making a mandatory contribution of 4% of compensation to their respective pension plans effective August 8, 2018. Subsection B, the budget changes reflected in Exhibit A1, which I handed out previously. Subsection C, a 2.5% millage rate increase. I think the document that y'all approved out of committee presumed, assumed a 3.29 millage rate increase, and then last, subsection D, remove the three furlough days.
And that still comes out to 2.5, or...
Well, I thought that's what you said initially, Ben.
I think the, you know, that's gonna equate to 4 million dollars, so I think you could reduce the millage rate to 1.5, or you reduce it to 2.0, and take that other, those other dollars and add back in some, quote, outside agencies, like a meals on wheel, like a defax, et cetera.
And my lights on, I don't want to dominate the conversation if you have other lights, but I would like to be in the queue for the song.
Right, I do, but let me go back now to my question. Is there a second to the amendment to the amendment? We've got a motion to amend the amendment, and that's what this is. Is there a second? Commissioner Jones made a motion to amend his own amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second for your discussion first.
Got a motion and second to amend the amendment, so further discussion is warranted. Commissioner Tillman, Mayor Protem, got you next, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and most of my comments are gonna be for the original motion, but to, just to piggyback on the, what we deem some call outside agencies, I deem them as our Macon-Bibb partners or service providers, but sometimes we've gotten to this habit of calling them all outside agencies. As it relates to planning and zoning, as some of us should know, and first of all, let me thank all of the Finance Committee members who have been down here working, I've attended a few of those meetings myself, and I know the hard work that y'all have done. And first of all, we, we as commissioners should really try and work together on this budget, because by far, we know it's not our fault. It is really the administration and the former county managers' fault that's got us into this, this mess that we're in. But let me, let me say this, as far as planning and zoning, by state law, we have to fund planning and zoning. You can't take away this amount of money as far as planning and zoning. I think what we can do after this budget is passed, and I think you and I have spoken about this, Commissioner Jones, we need to look and see how Macon-Bibb County Government can probably take over planning and zoning, because we are the only county in the state of Georgia that has a planning and zoning that is not under the commission or city council, and I think that that's part of what we do. And I'll come back with the, at the appropriate time for the actual amendment, and tell you how I think we got into this, and be more specific as far as how I can relate this back to our former county manager. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Got no additional lights on at this point, so I think what that means is, you're ready to vote on the first, which would be the amendment to the amendment, and as I understand from the county attorney and the explanation, the amendment to the amendment imposes, why don't you read it, read it again for me?
All right.
Just so we'll know, the amendment to the amendment imposes a 4%?
I'll read it. It's, again, the floor amendment that the commissioners have begins on the bottom page one under section one, "The following floor amendment shall be incorporated as part of Exhibit A." And Exhibit A is attached to the budget ordinance as the Macon-Bibb County Budget Fiscal Year 2019. So the following floor amendment shall be incorporated as part of Exhibit A. Active participants in the Macon, in the county's three pension plans, I'm not gonna read the name, the Macon, I'll just read it all. Active participants in the Macon-Bibb County Pension Plan, Division A of the Macon-Bibb County Pensions and Retirement System, and the Macon Fire and Police Department Employees Retirement System, here and after collectively referred to as the pension plans, will begin making a mandatory contribution of 4% of compensation to their respective pension plans effective August 1, 2018. Subsection B, the budget changes reflected in Exhibit A1. Subsection C, a 2.5% millage rate increase. And subsection D, remove the three furlough days. Those were, three furlough days were incorporated as part of Exhibit A, so that's the, and the Exhibit A, the original budget assumed again a 3.29% millage rate increase, so...
Got, got one, one point of inquiry, Commissioner Watkins, Mr. Chairman?
We're voting now on the amendment as it pertains to improving pensions in...
This, this is...
These four items here.
Right, this is the amendment to the amendment. That's exactly right, and it would, it would do what the county attorney just said.
I understand.
Okay. So all those, all those who are in favor of the amendment to the amendment, have I got another parliamentary inquiry?
Just gonna answer a roll call vote.
Gonna ask for a roll call vote, and I think that's automatic, if it's requested, so that's fine, and we'll do it, we'll do it that way, but those in favor of the amendment to the amendment would vote yes. If you're opposed to the amendment, to the amendment, you would vote no. Commissioner Slesinger, let me start with you. How do you vote, sir?
No.
No, Commissioner Slesinger votes no. Commissioner Lucas?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Bibbins?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Allen?
Votes no.
Commissioner Shepherd?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Watkins?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Tillman?
No.
Votes no. I think I counted two, two yeses, one. One, one, one yes, seven, seven no's. The amendment to the amendment fails. That brings us back then to the First Amendment, that Commissioner Jones proposed, his initial amendment, which would make the cuts to the outside agencies and other things, and as I understood it, brings it down to a 2.5, is that right?
Yes.
Brings it down to a 2.5 mil increase by making the cuts. So do, Commissioner Watkins, have you got something else for us?
Ask about the library. Do we know if this would keep us compliant with the Board of Regents, because if not, we lose our Galileo concepts, and a whole thing that is quite important to our school system and everyday citizens. I think actually your online access that the state pays for could be in jeopardy at this point. Do we know if these cuts would cause an impact, that we, or we'll find out later? Okay. I asked the same question about the Douglas Theater. Do we have any... Okay. I asked the same question about the Douglas Theater. Do we have any clue as to how this will impact the service delivery?
Okay.
Two-person office. Authority, it's a two-person office. We spend ninety-seven thousand on it now. This will reduce it to fifty. Would one of those people need to be laid off in this scenario, or is there a supplemental funding, funding to offset it, or do we know, or? Services. Last year, we paid thirty thousand dollars for burial services for the poor who couldn't afford to be buried. This anticipate zero in that service out? How, when, when the coroner receives the dead bodies, if there's no money in this budget, how do you guys anticipate it being paid for? Opportunity Council, eighty-eight thousand. There are people who work there. You want to put a zero there. Do we, it's not a valued service anymore? Or do we know if they'll be able to sustain? I'll yield, sir, but these are my questions.
Commissioner Lucas, I got, got you, and then I've got one, one waiting.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure, I guess pleasure is relative, of sitting in and being as a member of the Appropriations Committee, and I too want to applaud the chair for having those meetings. We have not previously had those kinds of detailed meetings. We've learned a lot. We've talked to a lot of agencies. We have found that there are a lot of hardworking people who give an awful lot of themselves with these so-called outside agencies, which are really not outside agencies. Indeed, they are agencies that provide vital services to our most vulnerable citizens. And I've been sitting here, just, it's, it's almost like, I mean, how much pain can you inflict? I've seen some cuts, some proposed cuts, that I just thought, does, I mean, how could anybody propose those kinds of things? Don't they know that with those cuts, that you're gonna impact your corrections budget somewhere, or you're gonna impact other budgets? Because there are people who will fall through the safety net, and we certainly don't want that. I cannot support this, because I think it is cruel. I think it's gonna do more harm. I know the reason for the proposal, and I, and, you know, you can only say it's a person's prerogative, their right, to propose whatever they feel they want to propose. But many of our constituents are given direct services as a result of the funding that we provide. It's funding that could not be provided any other way. And most of these entities are actively involved in fundraising all the time. They're actively involved in giving of themselves to help those citizens who may need just a little help. So I'm at a point where I have, the chair, similar questions as the ones that you have. You know, with planning and zoning, how, how do they continue to operate with that kind of proposed cuts? How do we provide for DFAX taking care of those foster kids that they have on a waiting list? How do we have other entities that provide valuable services? How do they continue to do that? Meals on Wheels, whose mama or daddy are you gonna not feed? But with the, the small funding that we provide, they're able to cut down their waiting list of over two hundred older people in need of a meal and a kind word or interaction with somebody on a daily basis. How do we, I mean, how do you come up with a plan that does so much harm? I, I don't know how you do that. I certainly will not be a part of that. I just can't support those kinds of things, and I, I do hope that we will defeat this and move on. The, the problem with this is we've had all of these discussions in the committee meetings. We've had agencies to come in and explain why, how they make use of funds and how limited they are already in providing services. We've had all this discussion, and then here we are again talking about cutting these services to, to children, to disabled. I, I just don't understand that, so I'm prepared to vote against this. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Jones, got you next.
For Mr. Chairman, question's been posed, how much will it impact planning and zoning? I don't know how much fat is in planning and zoning. Maybe there's none, but that's highly doubtful. Again, going back to my question, are they all worthy? You bet they are. They're all worthy. So my question to you and all the others would be, where's the money coming from? I don't have a money tree in my backyard. Where's the money coming from that's gonna continue to fund all of these agencies? Regardless of which, where's it coming from? Where's that money coming from? We're in this situation for a lot of reasons, and a couple of them I didn't, I didn't really finish touching on. One of them is SLOWS projects. Love the SLOWS projects. We, we, we put a recreation center here, so-and-so there. What we didn't do, what someone did do is analyze, okay, we're putting it in the ground, and we need it, and we want it, and this is gonna serve this part of town or that part of town. Who's gonna fund it afterwards? How much is it gonna cost to insure it, to provide staff, to provide utilities? That was never done. That's, that's, that's on us. Additionally to that, have been overstated. The revenues have been overstated for three years in a row. I hope that wasn't by design, but it was done overstated. So consequently, we made budgets based on revenue figures we were given from the administration, and we fell way short. So what did we do year two? By golly, we did it again. Then we did it again. How can you do that? That's a huge problem, a huge factor in where we are in this budget crisis. And it is a crisis. Yeah, we have revenues, and we have expenditures, but the revenues are way, way below. We cut our budget fifteen million dollars. Revenues are below that. You're still short. We're looking for answers. Nobody wants to make, we're gonna be back here talking about this again next year, Mr. and Mrs. Citizen Taxpayer. We'll be talking about it again if we don't make substantial cuts. It's not gonna please anybody. Won't please anybody, but we overstated the revenues. They were overstated and given to us, this commission, and then we're supposed to clean it up and make a, make a budget out of the mess? You know? We only do so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Allen, did you have anything, sir? At this point, Janice, I, I didn't see your light. No, okay. Then we're, we're voting on the amendment now. So this is the amendment proposed by Commissioner Jones.
I'd like to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this is the budget changes reflected in Exhibit A one that you have in front of you, which is, which would assume a two point five percent millage rate increase. Is that correct? Commissioner Mallory Jones? Isn't that what you initially said? Yeah, but what, this is not? Okay. Two point five percent.
Commissioner Schlesinger, I had an inquiry from you, sir?
Roll call vote.
Roll, roll call vote. Then just to kind of turn things around, the, those in favor of the Jones amendment would vote yes. Those opposed to the Jones amendment would vote no. I'll start again with Commissioner Schlesinger. Commissioner Schlesinger, how do you vote?
No.
No. Commissioner Schlesinger votes no. Commissioner Lucas? Votes no. Commissioner Jones? Votes yes. Commissioner Bibbins? Votes no. Commissioner Allen? Votes no. Commissioner Shepard? Votes no. Commissioner Watkins? Votes no. Commissioner Tillman? Votes no. One, one yes, eight, I'm sorry, seven no's, the amendment fails. That brings you back then to the original motion that was put forward by, by the Operations and Finance Committee, which is, I understand it, assumes a three point seven, no, I'm sorry, three point two nine, three point two nine, the original, the budget proposed by, by the Operations and Finance, three point, three point two nine mil increase in, in property taxes and expenses is set out in the budget that's been passed out. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Allen, got you now.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I've sat here and listened to a lot of talk, and, you know, I come from old school, like, yes, old county government, and we ain't never had nothing like this before. I mean, this is, this is just out of it for me. I'd like to make a motion that we refer this original all the way back to the committee as a whole and get back to work and work and work and work until we have a zero for taxpayers.
It, it, that's a motion to table, essentially, and refer back to committee for further vote. Is there a second? Right, it, right. Well, here, his, his motion is to table it and refer it back to the committee of the whole. Is there, is there? No, his, his motion is refer it back, 'cause the, the, it's, it's to refer it to the committee of the whole. Is there a second to that motion? Got a second by Commissioner Jones. So the, the motion is to, to table this, refer it back to the committee of the whole for further, for further work. Is there further discussion? Well, there is no discussion on a motion to table. Sorry, that's a non-debatable motion, so a motion with a second to table. So do we, all those in favor of the motion to table this and refer it back to the committee of the whole signify by saying aye? Oppose no? We got one no, the ayes have it. This motion is, the resolution, the budget is tabled and referred back to the committee of the whole for further work. So that ends the discussion on the budget for tonight, and takes us then to item P on your agenda, ladies and gentlemen. Item, item P is a, an ordinance to appropriate some additional funds for the Board of Elections, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to appropriate seventeen thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars from fund balance to the Board of Elections to fund the runoff election to be held on June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and to authorize, approve, and appropriate two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from fund balance in satisfaction of the settlement of a civil penalty assessed against the Macon-Bibb County Board of Elections as a result of a consent order and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, do you have further discussion on this item?
On this item, yes. As most of you know, I've spoken from time to time about concerns that I have had with our Board of Elections, and it is my feeling that there needs to be a, an evaluation. It's my understanding that there has not been an evaluation of the supervisor of the Board of Elections, and I stand to be corrected, but I don't know of any supervisor, anybody who works in an organization who is not evaluated. And so, and certainly something as important as our elections, a person needs to be up to date on all election laws on every level, and we as citizens need to feel confident that our elections are held in a fair, unbiased, and knowledgeable way. The person heading our election should know what he or she is doing. I have some concerns as to whether elections have been done in the correct way, and I would like to see this administration or our county manager, I'm assuming that that person falls under the county manager and our legal department, look at an evaluation process for the supervisor of the Board of Elections. And also, we need to make sure with these elections coming up, we've got, what, three more? People need to feel some confidence in the outcome of those elections. So I think we've got a lot of work to do, and this is just one indication, the fact that we're going to end up having to pay a fine for somebody else's lack of knowledge on, on subjects. I, I, I hate to do it. I know that we have to do that, but we've got our work to do. And this points out something that we did not do. With this consolidation, we failed to do an awful lot. And it's probably about time for a reconvening of not just financial people to look at our finances, but also the transition group that put all this stuff together and handed it to us and said, y'all go forth with this. We probably need to, to take a good look at a lot of the different things that are included under Macon-Bibb's consolidated government. That's just my opinion. But the fact that we've
Commissioner Lucas?
Had these findings, and that we are being fined and having to pay it, says that something is wrong. Yes?
I was just gonna say, does this pertain to the resolution that's under discussion, the ordinance?
It says Board of Elections.
Okay. Do you have further comments about the?
Elections.
Do you have further comments?
No, I'm, I'm finished with my elections comments.
Good. Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance to appropriate the seventeen thousand four eighty-three for the special election runoff and to pay the penalty for two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. That brings us to the final item on our agenda for tonight, and that is item Q, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to use emergency procurement for repairs at Henderson Stadium, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to utilize the emergency procurement process to resolve issues related to necessary steel replacement and repairs at Henderson Stadium and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. That brings us now to new business, and there are a number of items of new business. I'll read them by caption and refer them. The first item of new business is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with North America Fire Equipment Company, NAFCO, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for various turnout gear clothing for use by Macon-Bibb County Fire Department to be paid out of twenty eighteen SLOWS funds. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item B of new business is a resolution to establish new regulations governing Lake Toposavki Recreation Areas related to parking fees, boat launch fees, and facility rental fees, and to provide a water park only summer parking pass for users at the water park who've purchased season passes. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item C is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a state of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council grant in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand and sixty dollars that has been awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Adult Felony Drug Court, requiring a local match of twelve thousand three hundred and forty dollars. I'm gonna refer that to- I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee for further study. Item D is a resolution authorizing Macon-Bibb County to enter into an agreement with AT&amp;T for the provision of telephone and data service to the county at a cost of seventy-one thousand forty-nine dollars and sixty cents, payable at the rate of two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents per month for twenty-four months, uh, from the IT Department budget. Gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance, uh, Committee. Uh, Item E under new business is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of Georgia Office of Governor, uh, Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars, requiring a local match of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars for a total of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Adult Mental Health Court. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, Item F is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a juvenile justice incentive grant from the State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen in the amount of fifty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars with no local match awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Juvenile Court for the purpose of funding a data entry clerk's position. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee for further study and evaluation. Item G is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of Georgia Council of Accountability Court Judges Funding Committee for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen in the amount of two hundred thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars, requiring local matching funds of twenty-two thousand three hundred and five dollars for a total of two hundred and twenty-three thousand forty-eight dollars awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Veterans Court. I'm gonna refer that to Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, Item H under new business is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a juvenile justice incentive grant from the State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen in the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and two dollars with no local match awarded to the Macon Judicial, uh, Circuit Juvenile Court. Gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Y'all gonna be busy, Mr. Chairman. Uh, finally, a, a resolution to express support, uh, for the extension of I-14, uh, through, uh, Macon-Bibb County. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering, uh, Committee. Um, that ends the reading of the new business, uh, and it brings us now to the item that so many of us have been waiting for, uh, and that is public comments on non-agenda items. These are comments from the public on items that are not on our agenda, uh, for action tonight, but they are of interest and people want to talk to us about them. Uh, the first, Ms. Chet Novak, who called in, uh, about various and sundry other, uh, non-agenda items. Ms. Novak?
That's the first two thousand words of my talk tonight. Two pictures. Um, I would like to meet with the, um, the town attorney to discuss, um, the liability that MWA is gonna have regarding McCall Road. I'm sending pictures of their repairs after they fixed the water pipes that I've been complaining to them about for four months. And the sand has washed out from under that road, and I'm sure there's gonna be a caving in that road at some point in the future. And I think MWA should be responsible for it, for their negligence. And I hope that that doesn't take part of my five minutes, since that's got nothing to do with anybody else.
No, so your time's running, so go ahead.
All right. Secondly, I asked about how I could obtain use of the screens up here in the front. And I was told to come down to the community service in the mayor's offices building, and, uh, I would get it explained to me there. I came down here, my time was wasted. I was told that I was not allowed to do that, that that is only for your use, not public use. I paid for those machines, I paid for the services, I paid for the people that operate them. I want access to be able to put things up on here instead of having to print things out like I'm doing. That's number one. Number two, could I see the show of hands up there from the council members? Who saw the public records from MTA that says that they have seven hundred thousand dollars in a fund? Did anybody see that information? Because it was discussed and it was brought up a couple of meetings back when the, when they were asking for money, that they had seven hundred thousand dollars. Did anybody see that? All right? I had a meeting with two, for two hours with the MTA CEO, Mr. Craig Ross, since the last meeting. And then in fact, I found him to be very competent, very honest, and very intelligent. And he runs a tight ship over there. I got a complete tour of the facility, the people, et cetera. And it was made, I was made aware that, besides not having that seven hundred thousand dollars in an account anywhere, we owe him, MTA, when I say him, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the year two thousand sixteen and two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the year seven, two thousand seventeen still, which they have not pressed us for. So I think to give them a bad name and to say MTA blah, 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 is a bunch of malarkey. Last but not least, I am appalled at the lack of disclosure to us, the citizens, about this increase in garbage collection fees. Originally, and I have the contract from the, from the waste management people. Originally, they were charging us eleven dollars for the first barrel. We were passing fifteen dollar fee on to the, to the residents for collection. Four dollars, yeah, you got some administration fees, et cetera. Well, that contract does not call for any increase in their fees. But we went up from, uh, fifteen dollars for the barrel to twenty dollars. That more than doubles your income from that. That's number one part of it. Part number two of it, the second barrel that people have that gets collected, they only charge us five dollars a barrel. You were originally charging us fifteen dollars a barrel, you were making two hundred percent profit on it. Now you're getting an extra fifty percent on top of that for people that have second barrels. And I, by the way, under freedom of information, I have had no luck getting the P and L from, from the, from the department that handles this. And last but not least, the people that have vacant houses that are being charged, that's a hundred percent profit you're getting, because they're not getting any service. As a matter of fact, it's more than a hundred percent profit, because you haven't supplied them with barrels. So you haven't had the cost of even supplying a barrel to them, but you're still charging them the, uh, twenty dollars a month fee for, for pickups. I think it's outrageous that this was not disclosed to anybody, that you made it seem like, oh, the waste department went up, so therefore we have to raise your rates. That's malarkey. They never went up, and they're not slated to go up for a long time yet. I have a copy of their contract from the town. So I think that you people need to do a better job of disclosing it. Now, if you wanted to do that to raise money to help offset the budget, I applaud you, good. You found a way to do it, to snooker us all into paying for it without even knowing about it, to, to offset that deficit. But I really am upset at the way it was put down and the, 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 the lack of disclosure about it. And where is the town attorney here tonight? Would you please see me after, so I can discuss with you what's going on on McCall Road with that sand being washed out from under the road and everything? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Novak, appreciate you being here. Mr. Curry, are you still here, Robert Curry? Mr. Curry left, all right. Mr. Willie Frazier? We'd be here all night. We'd be here all night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't make this long, so you won't have to worry about being here all night. Believe me, I've been here all afternoon as well. And with what I've seen that's going on with our commission and with our county, I had a job to be at, at eight o'clock. And I forewent that job, because I'm still here waiting to talk to each one of you. That's just how important I think this is. I really need to make that money, because my homestead needs it. A lot of things that I do, I stand around for this city, and I go out and I volunteer my services. I give of myself, not even getting paid for it. They try to help at Linwood, at a lot of other different places that I do. I volunteer at my church, and I give of myself. And all I ask each and every one of you is give a little bit of yourselves as well. But what appeased me more than that is the fact that I could stand in here and the faith of our city relies on each and every one of you. I got pictures of each and every one of you in my phone right now. I've looked up to you over and over again, whether you know it or not. So I don't come in here, the demon, put you down every day. I gotta find a way to try to save my city and save all of the stuff, because everything shouldn't fall on the taxpayers, true enough. And we on the whole, true enough, but do you really believe that we can't climb out of this hole? Because if you don't believe that we can climb out of this hole, we ain't gonna get out of it. And I'm gonna tell you something, I come in here over and over again, and it behooves me and it hurts me to see that you all are not unified. You see, one thing that bothers me is we could sit out here and we can look at you every day. How are you gonna save us if you're not together? There's a separation here. I don't know what it is, and I can't figure it out and point a finger at each and every person, but consolidate the government my ass. And I'm, and I'm a Christian. Y'all ain't together. Y'all minds ain't together, your ideas ain't together, and all that. And you got to be on one accord in order to make this work. How can you make this work? Bickering, arguing, against one another? You know, I believe in unity. I am a Christian, I am saved. I believe in pulling together and working together to try to help a situation. And everything shouldn't cost, and everybody ain't gonna be satisfied, so what? But we still gotta find a way to get this together. Making this going down, and it's not a great city anymore. And people are saying that every day, and I'm tired, I'm frankly tired of hearing it. You know what's really sad? You know what? We'll turn around as people of color, and I just use me as people of color. And we'll laugh, because we see four to fifty Mexicans in one house. But you know what? It's sad that a group of Mexicans are pulled together and live together, eat out the same bowl and do all of that, but yet help one another. They making more money than anybody is, and they doing all of the work. The people, the workers that we used to be, they are now. And that's sad that they don't find a way to do that. Indian, Indians that own all the stores, poorest country in the world, but they made a pact in their country. And they come over here and open up a store, but that Indian goes clear from Georgia to New York and help an Indian that he don't know, open up a store and start a business and different stuff like that, and they grow. And we sad at the fact that we mad in this country, because they coming up. That's how you come up. That's how you turn around and pull things together, to get up and then make something work in a situation. You know what? I got everything against me. Everything in my life. I live in a poor neighborhood, they blinding pleasant hill. But in South Macon where I live at, you walk through there, everything torn down and run down and need to be blighted. It need to be changed, it need to be built up. We building up the infrastructure in downtown. But guess what? The whole city of Macon can't live downtown. It ain't big enough. You know, we take up parks and recreations and all this in the neighborhood. The parks and the recreations look good, and we need that. But the thing is, if you don't build up the morale of your city and your children and the people in your community, then what's the difference in building all that up? You bring new people in here and the old children that still don't know how to act, go around and rob, shoot, and kill them. What's the point of building that up? We got to build up the people, the morale, and all that, all at the same time in order to have a city that we used to have. 'Cause otherwise, we ain't gonna have it. We could turn around and change the building, we could change the painting, we could change the picture. But all, the whole, the thing as a whole got to be changed in order for it to work.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Y'all can do this. That's the reason why I keep on coming down here. Otherwise, make this my last time coming down here, because I can't help y'all no further unless y'all take me to a place where I can. But I still believe in it.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier, we appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Uh, Mr. James Brown, uh, about the community development event, Mr. James Brown? I think I saw him leave, uh, early. Ms. Donald Richardson? Ms. Richardson, uh, got some grassroots reflections, uh, for us? Ms. Richardson, you recognized five minutes, sir?
Yes, this is from the eleventh edition of Encyclopedia Britannica, and these are some things that I am seeing. And it's the Roman Empire later. In the Macedonian period, a grave domestic question troubled the government. This was the growth of the large estates of the rich nobles of Asia Minor at the expense of small properties, uh, to an excess which was politically and economically dangerous. The legislation against the evil began under Romanus I and was directed to the defense of the poor against the rich and to protecting the military organizations, which was based on holdings of land to which the obligation of military service was attached. There was also danger and excessive influence of rich and powerful families from which the great military officers were drawn and which were extensively related by alliances among themselves. The danger was realized in the struggle which Basil II had to sustain with the families of Celavon and Focas. Various kinds of legislation were attempted. Under Romanus I, alienation of property to the large landowners was forbidden. Nicephus Focas, whose sympathies were with the aristocracy to which he belonged, holding that there had been enough legislation in favor of the poor, sought to meet the difficulty in maintaining supply of military lands in the future by forfeiting further acquisitions of estates by the church. Basil II returned to the policy of Romanus, but with much greater severity, resorting to confiscation of some of the immense private estates and endeavor to keep down the aristocrats of Asia Minor by very heavy taxations. I guess what I'm saying, um, I'm still seeing this problem between the, um, the families who owned the cotton mills and the large commercial farms and the tenant farmers and the people who work in the cotton mills. Um, it seems as though that we're still acting out those same dynamics, uh, the rich getting the rich richer and the poor getting poor. So, uh, I just was using this, uh, as a parable from the Byzantine, uh, periods, the Roman Empire. And, um, I'm just seeing the same thing happening again. So I'm just trying to give you an overall view of what I'm seeing on the grassroots levels, just to try to be aware of it. Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, we, we appreciate you being here with us tonight, appreciate your comments. Um, are there any points of personal privilege? Uh, Commissioner Watkins, I got your light blinking, was that from earlier?
Actually, my question was on the point of...
Mr. Mayor and council members, when are you gonna stop these council members that we were here for hours listening to, from leaving the meetings before we, the public, have to speak to them? This is not the first time they've left early, and we're tired of it. We're here to talk to them, not to blank chairs.
Ms. Novak, thank you very much, sir. You're not recognized at this point. Commissioner Watkins?
So, hello, Mr. Richardson, what was the source material? That was, that was, that was very relevant to...
Anything else? And I don't have any other points of personal privilege waiting, uh, so we've reached the end of our agenda again. I got a motion to adjourn, got a motion without objection?